Line up all of our.
Well, there is from a.
Like good citizens.
From that perspective, a lot of what you guys have up there is smaller debris versus tree trunks. So it's easier to pick and kind of keep moving. We decided so we. We got that smaller deuce and because our the thumb on our deuce and wasn't working. And ours is a little bit bigger model. And we just decided to keep it the smaller one too for the rest of the week. So we have both for till Friday and nice. We have M and K through Friday.
They're doing an amazing job.
Awesome. Like it'll be forever dead at in Fred's.
Was he driving a truck?
Oh, yeah.
Cause there was an older guy. Every time they came by, I was like, I'm being worried. But I think I was like, I think that's him.
Yeah, one driver that had started for him and then kind of put his two weeks noticing cause he. Thought the job was different. And so, um. So we had Fred popped in the truck and I told Michelle, I said, I think he almost lives for stuff like this. He was, he's been the happiest of clients.
That's what I'm saying. He's way.
The community has been awesome, you know?
Where's my social distance spot here?
The, uh.
Is that here?
Yep.
Yep.
The final two days last, last week. I'm like, we had to go to the bathroom around because little kids would be bringing up drinks and you couldn't say no.
Oh, yeah.
So this is the good to the point where like. Just gonna, oh, I don't need anymore. And then today, um. We were working over on the summit and.
Turn this off.
You know, man flips his bike over railing. So. There was that excitement.
Paul, now you can move in your two days.
Uh.
They pushed it back.
They do.
They start back by two days for two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay.
They delayed the school delayed, um.
School by a week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Year first.
All right, I'm gonna get started.
Okay.
Call the August seventeenth city of Mount Vernon council meeting to the quarter. There are three items on the agenda that need to be tabled, public hearing, ordinance F one, and then under motions for approval, number nine.
That does.
That one can need to be removed on table. So that one needs to be removed. The other two items need to be tabled.
Number nine is removed.
You have to table the public hearing and the ordinance because. We don't have Bob Havelin. When they lost power, they didn't get the ordinances due me.
We have those, those two items are tabled and then number nine under motions is removed.
Those three changes, they did only motion approve it.
Sorry. Tom and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, I mean, obviously. This is, this will be the time where mayor council would make some remarks in terms of everything that's going on the last week, but I don't even know how you put it into words, quite honestly. Um, other than just to thank Chris and Nick and the entire crew, police department, fire department, M and K. I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. Cause this has been a one crazy, crazy week. As I told Chris throughout the numerous times that we spoke. It's just been a crazy five year run and we really look, look at everything, but obviously this one is just absolutely unbelievable. Something that none of us thought we'd ever see in our lifetime, for sure. Just the level of destruction. I mean, I don't think anybody was really spared, quite honestly, to some. To some extent or another, there's a lot that have much worse than, than we do outside of Mount Vernon, but. There's no doubt that we have taken our, our lumps this week. So, but a major shout out to the. To everybody involved. So without Chris and Nick's leadership, um, as well as chief and again, fire and everybody in town that really. Helped out has been, I don't know how you ever thank everybody, but just another kudos to Mount Vernon and why the town is as awesome as it is. So. If there's anything else that anybody else wants to add in council, anything else that we would like to share before we move on?
Ditto your comments, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Chris, and I know you will, but please make sure that you guys thank everybody.
Hmm.
On behalf of the council. At some point, I don't know. After COVID, need to get everybody together and have a pardon, pardon the phrase, let a bonfire, thank everybody, but we need to. Show our appreciation inside.
Wherever will we find a player?
In some manner, for sure. But. All right. With that said, we'll move on to the consent agenda, approval of council minutes from the August third council meeting. And a motion.
Uh, go ahead and move approval of the council, uh, city council minutes from the August third, uh, twenty twenty.
I'll say.
Scott, Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, so we'll jump right into motions for approval. Item one, consideration of claims list. Anybody have any questions? On the claims list.
Question about where's night shift cleaning now? Um. Couple invoices for night shift, cleaning service, P and A and.
They're at police and city hall.
Is, so we have transition there?
Our, our previous, uh, cleaners do not feel comfortable cleaning during COVID.
Okay.
Um, night shift was an easy transition because. Because they did do a deep clean for COVID related items. So we just transitioned to them. Um, we could go back. But I don't know if the two individuals that were, um, cleaning before will want to.
So they may be long term.
Yeah, and night shift is local. So they're the first logical choice to reach out to.
But they clean our office.
They do an excellent, I can, I mean, when you come in after they clean, you know they clean.
Any other questions? Who has their camera open?
I'll move to approve the claims list.
I'll second.
Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of setting a public hearing date for amendment to chapter fifteen, mayor of Mount Vernon municipal code.
Assuming that these are both going to be September eighth to remove.
What is this one in reverse?
So. This is. In conversations with the attorney, there's two things that. We needed to look at doing. Number one was amending, uh, the mayor role duties to match something similar to what the mayor has. Um, under emergency powers in Iowa City. So there's a, a few words that need to change to, I believe it's fifteen point zero two, two. Um, and then chapter forty nine, the next would be the actual, um. Ordinance fashioned in similar nature to maybe debunk.
Okay.
Um, that's kind of the, the. Ordinance that we were looking at.
And assuming in number four that we move the.
Yeah, assuming I know there's a September eight, which would be Tuesday.
Uh, in that case, I will, uh, move, we set a public hearing date for amendment, chapter fifteen, mayor of Mount Vernon municipal code for our next meeting, uh, presumably September eighth.
Second.
Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of setting a public hearing date for the adoption of chapter forty nine, individual P P E mask mandates of Mount Vernon municipal code.
Um.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yep.
I want a motion to that effect for the Tuesday, September eighth, being the promotion.
I'll say it.
Um, Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of moving the September seventh, twenty twenty city council meeting. We've kind of covered that.
Move approval that we move the September seventh scheduled, uh, city council meeting to Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty.
A second.
Scott and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration of carpet installation quote. Chris?
So the quote, quote that was received from Carpet King, um. It's just shy of ten thousand dollars to do the office area. And then I have a quote for forty six eighty two, I should say. Office areas and concrete areas. And then I asked for a quote to tile or to carpet tile over the red tile. Um, in the main entryways, uh, that's an additional forty six hundred dollars. So if I'm looking at a, a quote that's just shy of fifteen thousand. I want to talk to them a little bit further about carpet tile over that, that tile, but, um. I don't want to go through the expense of trying to chip that tile up. If we can carpet tile over it, then I think it'll have a consistent look and. Carpet or the tile itself upstairs looks a little out of place. What we decide to do going downstairs and down here will be phased to in a couple of years when we talk about this chamber.
So the forty six is just for the upstairs portion?
Any concern about that in a high traffic area for us having to clean them?
So, um, at one time, yes. Now, no. Especially, you know, depending on what we do with garbage moving forward in the future.
Just because people won't be coming for tags?
Potentially, yes. I mean, not to say that we're, yeah, theoretically, if we do go away from the tag program, that's significant amount of our, our. Local foot traffic anyway. Um, at that point. Similar to what we do at the L B C, we just get runners going down to the doors. Um. The guys have meeting areas at both of the other facilities for public works related items. So.
I would recommend just dealing with this at Kellman's. You know, if we go with the big squares, you know, let, let's buy an extra box or two. So if something gets spilled.
Yeah.
You know, that way we have something.
That was kind of the thought so that we could. We have, well, prior to the, the roof leak or the leak in the area, we had extra tiles. So we always keep extras available. Um.
Kellman's, but the hardware wouldn't find nothing no longer. They didn't have enough.
Carrying in.
Yeah.
So Carpet King is also who's doing the PD. So we just got the kind of consistent. They've had. The best two bids twice prior to this. And so. And their cost here is in line with what they've done in the, in PD so far. So.
So.
They're not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And yes, I will let you know about the forty six hundred. It's fourteen thousand, six hundred fifty nine.
And that covers all the upstairs at the end. Okay. Uh, well, then in that case, I would make a motion to approve the carpet installation quote, uh, for the upstairs portion of city hall, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll say it.
Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying.
Opposed. Period carries. Next item, discussion consideration of pay application number two, wagon pass.
So this pay application is in the amount of forty eight thousand, seven hundred forty six dollars and eighty two cents. If you driven over it, the wagon pass is nothing. So, uh, we're just going through the process, but. Likely at least one more pay application, possibly two. Um, if they don't ask for the retainage as part of their last one. There's a thirty day lag in between their retainage and what they can ask for. So you could have two, you could have one.
There were some, we got that huge rain.
Mm-hmm.
And we had some washout or something. Did, did that all get?
It did.
Danger.
Actually just washed over the, the new gravel. So we had to basically skim the, the mud off and.
Here on our rolls, gotta keep it going.
All right. In that case, I will move approval of, uh, pay application number two for the wagon pass in the amount of forty eight thousand, seven hundred forty six dollars and eighty two cents.
I'll say it.
Scott and Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of pay application number seven, cameras and security L B C.
This pay application is in the amount of two thousand seventy dollars and basically closes out this portion. Of the project.
I'll move approval of, um, pay application number seven, uh, at the L B C.
I'll say it.
Evan and Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of purchasing a front end loader grapple. Chris?
So this is the big John Deere that you see out at, um, Elliott. We've been wanting to buy a grapple, which is basically a huge claw that comes in and can grab debris like this, large trees, a number of things and. Wouldn't you know? We decided to do this. Uh, mother nature gave us an even bigger reason for, for having one. The cost of, uh. The grapples is not to exceed seventeen thousand. We're waiting for one additional quote, but the quote that we have will be just under seventeen thousand. So, um. The amount of debris and things that we can move. With this thing, I wish we would have had it for this cleanup, but, um. It's still a week and a half out. We might probably, or will probably use it out at Elliott.
Oh, even when we started doing the cleanup or as far as chipper and stuff.
Yeah. Well, and the other part of that is, is, um. If you haven't been to nature park.
Well, and even Davis.
Davis is bad, but nature park is.
It is worse. Yeah, I've been there.
But a trail is still there.
Yeah.
The, yeah, as a matter of fact, the trails did, and somebody, a Good Samaritan cut that because staff didn't.
Oh, really?
We didn't open the trails.
They, they what?
Somebody went down and cut the trails open for us because we didn't do it.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Cause as of like four o'clock yesterday.
Yeah. They were done over the weekend.
Wow.
Down in the ravine. And cause Nick and I had talked about it and he's like, what do you want to do? And I'm like. Comes last and I was driving around on the weekend and somebody had cut it open.
It happened to Blake Sunday.
So. So, uh. Nature Park has.
Yeah.
Cottonwoods that are.
I know.
Yeah.
There's three huge ones that pulled the whole root up and it's just.
Two of the root balls are back. And as soon as you snap off the tree, the root ball goes back into the ground. But, um, yeah. So we have. I mean, we were going to have plenty of use for it before. This is kind of heightened the use for it, but.
So tell me about the grapple. How many operators do we have that can run that right now? And, you know, when we.
Actually, there's three or four guys that can run that John Deere pretty well. Um. Christian can run it. Nick runs it. Eldon runs it. Um, Donnie can run it. So. Actually, Nick gave me a quick tutorial over the weekend. So technically speaking, I could get in there and run it. I know I wouldn't do near as good of a job. So I'm in, I'm like down here in an emergency situation, but, uh, yeah, we have. The, the.
That's good.
When I get down to the, the storm damage assessment and talk about this, the, the beautiful part about the crew that we have assembled over the, the past four and a half years is that. They're interchangeable. I mean, there are gentlemen that are. Better at certain pieces of equipment, but, um. You know, you can stick multiple people on trucks or skid loaders or grapple. I mean, this is, this was. It was incredible.
So we're looking now to exceed seventeen, is that the idea? And we've got, uh, I'm assuming the budget is okay to absorb that?
Yeah. So, um. There were some savings in other places of, of road use tax and, um. I will actually probably. Separate this out amongst all of the.
What's the price again?
Seventeen thousand.
Thousand for just.
The grapple, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it, it. If you, when you see it, you'll kind of.
You'll understand.
You'll understand why it's, it's. It sticks out from the bucket. I mean, it kind of goes up and over. It's a massive piece of equipment, but. If you could imagine. Pushing everything to the streets and loading one dump truck with. One grapple. I mean, that's what that thing could hold.
Good boy.
Yeah, it's, it's that kind of crazy.
I will move to approve the purchase of a front end loader grapple not to exceed seventy two thousand dollars.
I'll say it.
Evan and Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. No reports, uh.
And I think that some of them had their reports done. I just didn't ask for them. So I'll have them send that out.
Yeah, let's not wait for them.
Throughout the week and just.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah. So that you got them, but Nick might be the only one that probably gets a pass this, this time around, but.
Just this once.
Yeah.
I know what's on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't know what happened.
Exhausted, moved a bunch of trees, go to bed.
All right. Next item, storm damage assessment.
So I'm gonna pull this down a little bit so everybody can kind of hear me about what's been going on. So, um. Obviously on Monday. Uh, we had something that I've never even heard of, uh, forty three years in Iowa. I didn't know they had a name for, for what was about to happen. Um. I had received a text message from my brother, actually in Des Moines, told me that this large storm was on its way. Um. I vividly remember telling at least half of you in my interview that one of my proudest moments was the windstorm that I went through. That was sustained winds of sixty to seventy miles an hour. This was sustained winds of. Up of a hundred. And I've, I've heard people state that it was clocked at, um, north of one twenty, but. I haven't been able to verify that yet. For those questioning that it sustained winds at a hundred miles an hour is a tornado, an EF one tornado that lasts. An hour. So that's basically what we ran into here. Um. Thanks to that heads up and knowing what was coming, um. We, we got the shelter open and ready to go here. Soon as the sirens off, we were already equipping. Um, our vehicles and ready to. Open street. So. As this, um, develops. Our priority number one is to get access for emergency vehicles. So we opened the streets first. So public works first thing is to. Get the loader out, put plows on trucks, push trees however we can get them off the street. Clearing a path for the volunteer fire department who does basically risk assessments of all of the damaged homes. Um. Thankfully, we had less than. Probably less than a dozen severely damaged homes. And I don't even know that we would have gotten to the threshold of twenty five. Considered minor damage. So FEMA has a, like a, basically a four stage rating. Um, and they even give you kind of a pictorial on what accounts to what. This is a testament, I think, both to my staff and then to the department heads and just the, the pages that we're all on. It was as seamless as possible. Doug had radios ready to go. We don't have radios because we don't spend that much, um, where we all can talk. So. At, for the first two days, we each carried two radios, one for kind of the public works employees and the other was for the emergency services. So we were able to monitor both. Um, we lost power immediately. So it was without a doubt, you know, we knew it was, was bad. Uh, all of our generators at the public facilities that have them, uh, came on right away. Um. Little nervous, uh, at the very start of the storm because we weren't able to communicate very well. Uh, we had self-service for about thirty minutes. Um, and then when the battery backups went out in certain locations, you started to see your signal, um, drop. And that's why. In Mount Vernon, you had to go to very specific portions of the community to, to even get out. So about. Seven, eight o'clock Monday night, we were able to get ahold of Lynn County, our Lynn co-op, who, um, fills our generators and then fills our. Tanks at the public workshop. So, um. We were actually quite successful on Monday. We had most of the streets opened with the exceptions of those that had the downed power lines, um. By about five o'clock. And we immediately moved to the northeast quadrant as far as debris removal. So. I know you've had people ask how we chose the quadrants. Um. First and foremost, we chose the northeast quadrant because it was the smallest geographically. As far as what we needed to go in and pick up. It was something that we could start right away on Monday and probably finish early Tuesday morning. We proceeded to the northwest quarter because geographically it's. One of the largest, oldest sections of the community, block per block. Um. We spent a total of two and not quite a half days in the northwest quadrant, uh, removing debris. Immediately moved to the southwest, um. From a purely a damaged perspective, uh, narrow streets, significant damage in that core. Kind of five block area by, you know, five or six block long. That was bad. Um, and it's made it even harder for us to maneuver in there, getting everything into dump trucks, things like that. So. Um, and then of course, we still have the northeast quadrant, um, driving through the northeast quadrant. Majority of what is there outside of highway one and first street, um. It can actually be sent through the chipper. We'll pick up. A lion's share of it just because it's easier to get out of there and it's, um, less cumbersome with the machines, but we'll be there tomorrow. By the end of the day tomorrow, we'll be ninety five percent through the entire community once over. I'm kind of spitballing here, but I'm, I'm willing to bet that we probably picked up. Somewhere between sixty and seventy percent. Of the initial storm debris or the storm debris that's in the community. We're going to be picking up debris for the next three weeks because there's. People that have it in alleys and things like that that.
Still suspended.
Yeah, waiting for lines to get put back up. And so, um. But, um. You know, huge shout out to M and K. They were on the phone with us within a half hour. Um, we've had three trucks, two skid loaders. And even Fred driving a truck. So we've had like five or six operators since last Monday. Um. From. My cruise perspective. For anybody that has witnessed that the Deuce and was probably one of the best purchases we've made in the last month and a half. It's. It can maneuver both on the tight streets, but the amount of debris that it can pick up in one skipper, even versus the skid loaders with the grapples on it. Is kind of amazing. So, um. That's really kind of initially where we're at. My understanding as of today, uh, Emily Uba called me at. Five o'clock and said that, um. Mount Vernon is north of ninety five percent back with power. Uh, those that do not have power. Probably have something wrong with their connection. Um. She did ask, and I would ask if, as you're talking to anybody, um. I don't know if they received phone calls, but, uh, she. She mentioned weak power, so kind of intermittent stretches of, of weaker power. But I haven't had anybody, uh, reach out to me.
Yeah, the, they're uptown. There's a couple of our real.
Retail.
Our retailers.
Okay.
Including the wine bar who's, who is reporting that they have weak.
And it not surprising, um, Marion's. I think still like forty percent of their residents are still without power. Cedar Rapids is Lynn County EOC has been, obviously, it never really stopped operating because of COVID, but it just kind of switched gears a little bit. We did send up a crew, just a two-band crew today to Lynn County to help them trench in some power so they could get their shop up and running. I hate to say that you're almost feeling somewhat guilty, but as much progress as that we've made in Mount Vernon, by the end of Friday, everything that we have is pretty manageable, meaning the piles of debris are pretty sporadic. So one of the other questions that I've heard people ask is why didn't we go to Bryant Park originally, like right off the bat? And why did we go to Elliott? Well, there was a power line across Bryant, so we couldn't get big equipment into Bryant, so we immediately moved to Elliott. There is a question when an event like this starts right off the bat, because I've also heard why didn't we start burning it immediately? You don't want to burn unless you know that you're going to be allowed to burn, and so moving it to Elliott on a hard surface, not knowing what kind of weather we're going to get on the backside, our site on Bryant Road, even when it did open up, has the opportunity to become soft, so there was zeroed out in my mind that that's where we wanted to go. It also has two parking lots, so we were able to open up a public side and keep our debris, not that we're trying to keep them separate, we're just trying to avoid traffic accidents with individuals coming and going, so. All in all, we had an individual group from Iowa City came up today and they were handing out formula and diapers, batteries, anything and everything, so individuals were able to contact them direct. We have sent donations over to Southeastland, they're the the best organization for dealing with those folks that have lost a significant amount of their food sources and are not able to replace them quite easily. All in all, we we weathered the storm fairly well. We were Cedar Rapids, Marion, Mount Vernon, all along Highway Thirty, we're basically in the absolute worst part of the path of the storm, so we did get hit the hardest, but otherwise, yeah, I mean, we worked essentially, we're working six to seven, seven-thirty, Monday through Friday of last week. Gave most of the employees the weekend off, Nick and I kind of manned the pile and talked to citizens, did things like that. One of the after-action items that we'll discuss is and it won't just be Mount Vernon, it will be everybody. What to do when everything goes down? Cell phones, internet, power. Marion and Cedar Rapids basically went to Hy-Vee, they made up flyers, individual flyers, and went to Hy-Vee and just handed them out. We did not have to get to that point. Thankfully, things started to kind of kick on shortly thereafter and sporadic messages were coming out. Text messages, thankfully, for me to be able to communicate with you even on a limited basis was huge, but one of the things that Chief has already done here is as a backup internet system, not that it would have probably done us any good here, but we do now have cellular routers, so we have a backup that's not tied directly to MediaCom. City Hall lost phones, I mean, everything is it was insane to me, just the sheer loss, so. Beyond that, I will answer any questions that you have, like I said, I've the citizens of Mount Vernon have been incredible, I have never received so many compliments as we are out working. People are absolutely amazed with the operators. Eldon was actually able to to rake people's yards with the tines of that little mini hoe and not tear up their grass, and people would just, they didn't have TV, so they would just sit outside and watch and work.
It's the best show around.
Yeah. So we do know of one injury Monday night shortly after the storm occurred, that one individual was hit by a hanger coming out of a tree. He is recuperating, it was pretty scary, they did bleed broke, at least one, if not two, the vertebrae right towards his neck, so that was the scariest moment we have. I think this is just so I have two staff that are hobbled and injured right now, and both of them are working fourteen, fifteen-hour days. Some days, they can't even get out of the machines that they're operating without, you know, grabbing everything, and I think that's just kind of a dedication of the staff and and hopefully kind of explains some of my decision-making process, you know? A lion never had to to wait on us. We get a lot of compliments from the guys out of Wisconsin as far as not having to fight debris when they get here. Yes, we have gone down private roads to pick up debris. Yes, we have gone onto private property to cut something that was right there, I mean, I will welcome anybody that wants to have a further conversation about that, but I felt, you know, in those situations, it was the right thing to do, we've pulled hangers out of trees for people with the equipment, it's just so far, I think everything has went right as far as what our staff could do. So, yeah.
I've heard nothing but positives, not even one, well, what about this? It's been nothing but, yeah. Rain reviews.
There is not a rulebook for this kind of situation, and you're going on instinct.
No, as a matter of fact, Derek, Doug, myself, Nick, you know, when we got together initially, it's right, wrong, or indifferent, we're making a decision and we're just going to go with it, we'll we'll deal with whether or not we made the right one on kind of an after after-situation conversation, but yeah, I thought we were fairly concise. I thought we had roads open in an extremely quick amount of time, and from a debris, like I said, debris removal perspective, we are six days into, six working days into this, and again, eighty-five to ninety percent of the community has been gone through at least once, so.
Two points, the the timing and the location of the, by the swimming pool for that food dumpster was smart, because that's about the time everything started to turn, and except for a few abuses I saw late Sunday night, there was pretty much, pretty much everybody putting in their wasted food. And second, having the site for people to privately drop off and stay out of your way to drop off their own rubbish. I made four trips up to Field E, and there were one or two trucks, I saw Eric up there one time unloading too, and and it's not the same size as the pile by the the other fields, but it's a lot that you didn't have to deal with, so that was a smart idea, having a second site and having a food dumpster.
I think it's important for council to also understand, you know, we talked about a lot of the tree debris and stuff like that, but recognizing Mount Vernon and what our emergency services are, the police, fire, ambulance aspect of that, remembering that all of our homes are impacted, you have a volunteer fire department and a volunteer ambulance service who was immediately our our volunteer services operate, I would put them up against many of the full-time active departments that we have, they are highly trained and and very efficient at what they do, and we are blessed to have them in our community doing what they do. Fire was immediately on it with chainsaws and equipment, opening up streets, clearing and and working seamlessly. I worked the ice storm we had in two thousand and seven, I was working that event as well. And that went pretty well. Nothing compared to how smooth of the operation this went, and he's Mr. Humble over here, but I want you guys to also understand that the leadership that Chris has brought to this event has been phenomenal. Make all the entities are working together amazingly, makes everybody's job easier. When I'm not responding to calls, I'm, as I'm driving by crews, I'm stopping and handing them Gatorades and making them stop and take, you know, drink this, because when they're in it, they're not thinking about drinking, and then you're going to run into dehydration and other issues related to that, so. We were doing that all the back and forth, and Chris and I are coordinating, making sure everybody's properly hydrated, but the fire and ambulance, ambulance was immediately, I mean, there's calls for service, we were inundated and we still, we're still running, I think we had four calls today, or three or four calls today. And and so they're still running, the ERs are full. And that's, we're, it's amazing to me at the magnitude of the damage that we've got, we've had the one incident-related injury from this. I can't believe we didn't have injuries from the event itself. That to me is amazing in itself from there, so. Everybody's rocking and rolling, the ambulance crew has been immediately hit the ground with with multiple crews. Got a list from Iowa Department of Public Health and of people in need, people who are registered as in need, checking on shut-ins, checking on those that they know have medical conditions requiring oxygen, determining how much oxygen they have at the time, so they they're calculating, okay, I need to go back and do a check on this place at this time to see how they're doing and monitoring medical condition. Those guys are all volunteers who have trees in their yards and no electricity at their house and all of this stuff as well, they're all part of our community from doing that, and so kudos to fire and ambulance, and and like I said, it's just been, everybody is seamlessly working together. And I think, like I said, tip back to the testament, that's why we're where we're at, so.
And it anybody that obviously has a day job knows that that doesn't happen by accident. I mean, it's all about collaboration and working together, so kudos to me and Chris, Chief, Nick. Without you guys, it's not going to happen, so.
No, and and just like I said, all the staff that hasn't even been mentioned tonight, City Hall staff are manning the shelter, food, answering walking questions with my two updates per day as I would walk back in and tell them, this is where we're at, here, here, and here, and so you know, none of that obviously is easy and and you know, from a staff perspective, I'm you're happy every day you go home. Tired, but happy, so. Like I said, I think by the end of the week, we'll have a fairly decent jump on it. One one item that Doug has shared on on Facebook and and other venues is obviously the mental health issues that can go along with this. We're hoping, we're monitoring, we've had a few calls for service as it relates to that, I think every day that we go ahead and and get into that recovery mode, the better, but there are individuals, like I said, I mean, that just basically they're still walking out of their house, and it's it's utter despair, I mean, they're just staring at an immense amount of debris, loss of food, you know, loss of potential income, and so. So, yeah, I think we're definitely not out of the woods, it's just a matter of kind of shifting gears from here on out, but the other thing that I would tell you is from the very start, we started keeping track of all of our individual time on machines, use of equipment, things that we purchased, expecting the presidential declaration. So we're, when we start filling out the FEMA paperwork, we've got a leg up there already. Yeah, like I said, the only other thing I would say is with no phones and no internet, I didn't see any point in sitting in City Hall, and I still haven't been hearing much, so I do a lot through phones, conference calls for phones, things of that nature, but yeah, it's been good. Bad and good.
Well, thanks, everybody. The police department phones are still down, however, they rolled over straight to dispatch, so you're not going to be able to ring us, the officer is going straight to dispatch yet. City Hall's got theirs back today, wasn't it? I think, so.
We expect yours back.
MediaCom has no idea. I've called them again today.
Shocking.
They're replacing the fiber line, it's is what drives us, Cedar Rapids, good, and so. Luckily, it transfers over, like I said, people, if they call the six-one-four-one number, it's going straight to dispatch, they're getting the information sent out to us, so.
I'd just like to commend all the citizens, too.
Absolutely.
Because it was amazing, all the neighbors helping each other out and taking trees off their houses and it was something else, sharing the generators, the power, and it was, it was amazing.
Yeah, if there is a silver lining in this, driving around as much as we did, seeing things, kids not on technology. Neighbors helping neighbors, drop cords going from generators across the street, people standing in the front yards having conversations, I mean, in that respect, it was kind of a rewarding feeling, I mean, that happens more in Mount Vernon, I feel like, than other communities anyway, but it was tenfold after this this happened, I mean, whole baseball and softball teams were were out Monday and Tuesday, I mean, we we go by and and they were out cutting people's debris, people that weren't there. So, yeah, I was I was quite tickled, and and we're going to hold a, I think the school's holding a cross-country meet next week or whatever. To even think that we're, this is potentially conceivable.
Well, you drive through other communities and you see the, you know, where they are in their recovery, and then you get here and you see where we are. It's it's a testament to, as Eric said, the the community and the department heads and the staff and everybody, and it's just, it's amazing the difference that you see, so.
Credit to Gary's, the morning that they opened at six AM, they had three trucks at seven. You know, restocking everything.
And and to Gary's, even after he had to close after a loss of power and knew it was going to be long, he did supply our staff, the fire department with
All of our Gatorade.
Yeah, all the Gatorade and water and stuff like that, so.
And he also supplied the the food and the grill for the Lions Club, the free, you know, hot dog.
Oh, he did, yeah.
With Skillet also.
And Skillet.
Yes.
Skillet also had the staff.
Yeah, I mean, just free.
It's that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we have citizens like volunteering to give us lunch, all of us lunch every day, and we're we're like having to turn people away, and it feels really bad, but we've already got so many people lined up.
We're scheduling to September twentieth now.
Yeah.
Just well, let's see, Chinese history.
And the other thing in terms of citizens, you know, it's not always physical, some people are on social media, you know, just
Yeah.
Insta saying, here's where you can get stuff, you know, what do you need, and just.
There is a Facebook page that that is I'm going to forget the name of it right now, but it's Mount Vernon Lisbon Quick Storm. So I've been monitoring that pretty close and making comments to individuals, putting some updates on there. Again, all positive comments that we've received so far. Highway One is, like I said, going to happen on Wednesday. We need a significant amount of our personnel doing traffic control while we do that, so if anybody does ask, we we plan to hit that Wednesday morning. But otherwise, yeah. You know, just keep reminding everybody that we're coming back through again, not only to to pick up big stuff, but we're picking up, bringing the chipper out and doing things like that, so.
Also, the group who brought the, that Chris mentioned earlier, is bringing all the donated items up to City Hall today. They've been operating out of the conference room, and they're kind of getting overwhelmed, they don't have storage space and everything else for our group, we're going to move. We're going to move them out to the new PD tomorrow, into the sanctuary portion, they can section that off. They can have their own private entrance, get right into that area. Public can come out there, they're not interfering with the police business, they're not interfering with the carpet, the tile, they're doing tile lane. They tore off carpet, starting a flooring project for the public entrance, so they'll be separate from that as well. So we can put some signage in the yard and they'll be able to go there and have plenty of storage space tables and disseminate stuff out from there. So we're going to move them out of the conference room here tomorrow and take them out to the police department. So any resources that Chris mentioned, I know, I think a lot of the supplies they had too, like you said, it came from Iowa City and Cascade Gate brought down a bunch of their stuff that they had left over to be disseminated down here. So anybody in the community that needs any of the resources like that, first thing tomorrow morning, we're going to be transitioning them to, to the new police department building.
I have one negative thing to say, there was a KCRG report apparently came and talked about the fact that cleanup hadn't started. I don't know, they never made any contact with city staff and I don't even know, I was trying to recognize where they were at in the community, but it was a one-reporter kind of show where he had his own camera or whatever, but that was the only random thing that I saw that I was like, wait a minute.
Kind of like the national news report.
Yeah.
From Cedar Rapids, but through Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it was, it was a little hinky, but other than that, Margaret and I did a Twitter video, what, maybe an hour into it, two hours into Monday night.
I don't know if it ever got out because the cell service.
So there's two people who've seen it.
We were attempting, you know.
Well done, guys.
No, yeah, just super happy about the efforts and glad everybody's pleasing.
Excellent. All right.
Nick and I went on vacation when all the.
As long as there's no storms. All right, and they want reports, I certainly don't have anything at this time, anything from council, committee, anybody?
Just because they went over those railroad tracks again.
Yeah, I've seen, UP has been here twice and they've been, like the inspection truck, looking at it. Because they tripped the, they tripped the signals on Highway One twice. And people were sitting there for like twenty minutes with no train going by. So they're looking at them, they won't give me a timeline on if they're when, if and when they're going to fix it, but.
A good enough complaint, I don't.
Yeah.
It's, it's terrible.
Oh, they're horrible.
Emailed or whatever.
Chris, they fixed the Lisbon one, fixed the Lisbon one, it's. When they do fix this one, don't be surprised.
It's a best-of-lateral move. Chris, do you have any?
Nope.
Nothing you want to add?
We've been a little busy, so we're good.
All right, anybody else have anything? No further business, we can change the jury.
Chris, is that, so a religious kind of thing, is that something that's spread a lot, or is that something that you think about how a city would respond to something?
I would say that there was, there's been a significant push between himself and Nick and the owners of H and K to cooperate, work together, especially in the last one and a half, five years. I mean, there's always been, oh, they just sit there, now people might never be going to get in.
Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah. But they could easily say no.
Yeah, they, they didn't have to give us, they didn't have to give us food up trucks to.
Fred didn't have to come out, I mean, there's, there's obviously a trust and relationship.
But I think the relationship building that we've done recently has helped, especially with Fred.
Hey, Chris, can, can citizens come here and use the internet?
Yeah, it's actually the telephone, the three-one-nine-nine-five-eight-seven-four-two, that's the password.
Password?
They can ask upstairs too, but that's the password.
We don't have media, our wife needs a, a network.
She can come in. Yeah, she can either come here, the L B C, one or the other, but yeah, here's easy, she can.
Let her know that.
Sit up at the table.
She had to get a hotel in Cedar Falls as close as she could get.
Oh, no. She can. She can connect up here, Joe Jensen's been working at that table for the last three or four days. Yep.
I was just curious about, I got the power.
Awesome.
When you, like I drive through, like you come down on Highway Thirteen and there's that softball, baseball stadium right at the Mount Vernon Road. You know, there's, there's staging.